Okay, folks, we're gonna get started. Thank you for all being here. It's seven minutes after five. Okay. Um, let's see. Really? Okay. Oh, really? Oh. Oh, goodness. Okay, we're gonna do, um, open session call to order flag salute. Let me call on a great American. Let's see, everyone here is a great American. The Honorable Herb Young. Can you lead us in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and consider it valid for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Um, Dr. Bregge. I think we have spotlight on students, correct?
Um, yes, we do. Um, we have several different recognitions tonight. Like to call up, um, who's coming up already? Uh, Coach Brattle, thank you so much. We are so proud of you, Coach, uh, for all of your accomplishments and your team. Um, and I know this has been a long time coming, so we've had a really full schedule, and I, and I want to thank you very much for being here, uh, this evening. As a great coach and teacher, you have made the intangible tangible, um, the sometimes, um, unobservable, uh, to someone in the stands, someone like me, um, able to see the type of respect, uh, the teamwork that happens with, with your team. Um, I received so many compliments about the way that your team has displayed sportsmanship, not only with other teams, but also, uh, among themselves, and that carries a lot of weight, um, and it, very proud that you've been able to represent, um, our school district. So it would be great at this time if you could give us just a quick recap on your season.
Thank you. First of all, we'd like to thank you guys for having us. Uh, the recap of the season, we've, uh, this is our second. We've won back-to-back. This was our second, uh, CAF title. So, uh, I'd like to, you know, like I said, thank you guys, but also like to thank the kids, uh, they've done an outstanding job, they've worked extremely hard. Um, we have 11 seniors on the team this year. Uh, we have some, some real young kids also. If I could take two seconds, if they could really, girls, could you introduce, I'd like to, first of all, to introduce Coach Heidel, he's done a fantastic job with us. He's my assistant coach. Um, if we could go down the line real quick, girls, your name and your grade. Go ahead, kiddo.
Sophomore Jenny Zor.
I'm a freshman Natasha Malaga.
Senior Isolde Ron.
Senior Shanae Heather.
I'm a senior Julian Araliyo.
Sophia Goldbrun, I'm a senior.
Sophia Doan, I'm a junior.
I'm a freshman.
I'm a senior.
I'm a sophomore.
Megan Dangian, I'm a senior.
Crystal Brown, I'm a senior.
We, uh, we had a few other girls that couldn't be here, uh, they're somewhere in Madger Girls and doing other things through the school, so, um, we'd like to, you know, talk about them later too also, but, again, this has been a fantastic few years, uh, the girls have been great, and their parents have been outstanding, uh, their parents have done a great job in this school district with, uh, these young children, these young kids with, uh, their, their work in the classroom and, uh, on the floor has been outstanding. Couldn't get a better group of kids, so, again, I thank you, girls, very, and Coach, and I thank you guys for having us, appreciate it.
Thank you.
And before you leave, I know this is a little bit awkward space, but we'd love for you to kind of come in front here so that we can get a picture with the board.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Congratulations, that's wonderful.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Very cool. Congratulations.
Thanks.
Okay, so I'm gonna, um, we don't have that many speaker cards, so let me just, um... Oh, my god. You sure? Okay, you're right, public comments. I got, uh, uh, I got overexcited with public comments, so... You're right, okay. I have my, I have the ones with the notes here. Okay. Item six, approval of the agenda.
I move approval of the agenda.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, Pam, moved by Mr. Spitz and seconded by Mr. Margot, and was passed unanimously. Okay, item seven, report of closed session action. Dr. Bregge.
In closed session, the board voted five to zero to approve settlement agreement for student number 15325, and in closed session, the board voted five to zero to approve the settlement agreement for student number 16797.
Thank you, Dr. Bregge. Um, now we're on to item eight, accommodations and recognition. Dr. Bregge, 8A.
There's no more important recognition or celebration than when we can recognize our colleagues. The Apple Awards are designed to showcase select individuals for their excellence in service to our schools and district, um, with our colleagues, and we're glad that you're here this evening. Uh, the Apple Awards are sponsored by our PTA and also with, through our BHGF. Um, we're incredibly fortunate to have, uh, many of our winners here tonight, so I'd like to, uh, when I call your name, if you could please come up to the front area, and at the end, we'll do another picture, like we just did. Chris Hertz. Chris has demonstrated at the highest level that he is an employee of the district first and the position he serves second. When I asked Chris to take the interim position at Beverly Vista, his response was, whatever you need, you can count on me. Two months later, I asked him to lead a new position in the district, and with the same enthusiasm, enthusiasm, he rose to that challenge. Next, Josh Glass from Beverly Hills High School. Josh represents the teacher who continues to evolve in his practice and is student-friendly, and in his classroom, you find students that are active and always engaged, um, they're always moving and talking with one another. Josh is a teacher that I receive the most compliments about this school year. Um, Ally Norman Franks. Ally is the crisis intervention counselor at the Norman Aid Center, and she is like the architect. She designed it, she built it, and she continues to build on her successes. Katina Valens from Beverly Vista. Katina's a music teacher who creates as many opportunities as possible for her students. She places high accountability and expectations for her students and also herself. She volunteers to extend her expertise and assistance at BV as well as at the district level. Jori Lindsay from Hawthorne. Jori is incredibly creative and talented, she's loved by her students and parents in her classroom. Uh, Jori was also an integral part of our Future, Future Focus Schools team this year, and, uh, she was always one of the participants to jump out and help, and also, uh, willing to start and be part of the updates for the board with presentations. Emmanuel Rousseau. Emmanuel teaches French, and there is no other employee on our payroll in the entire district that teaches in four of our five schools. She's truly one of the most flexible teachers I've ever worked with and in my career, and she's clearly the definition of placing service above self. Thank you. Linda Omansky from Elrudeon. Linda has been an instructional assistant in the district for 30 years, or 39 years. In addition to her responsibilities in the classroom, Linda also took on the role of president for the IA unit for BHGA from 1985 to 2007. Oftentimes, it's our hardest-working employees who are the most under-recognized. Linda holds two titles this afternoon or this evening. She's an Apple Award-winning staff member, and she's the very first instructional assistant ever to earn this prestigious award. Congratulations. And if possible, we'd love to have you come down for a quick picture.
Okay. Dr. Bregge, we're on a roll. We're on to 8B. Correct?
Yes.
Okay. The time to read the motion. Okay, we got it. No, I'll let you read it.
You want me to read the whole thing?
Yeah, read it, sure.
Well, I gotta make a motion first. Um, I'll move to approve resolution 2017-2018 dash 032.
Moved by Mr. Margot, seconded by Mr. Spitz.
Teacher Appreciation Week. Whereas the teacher educators of the Beverly Hills Unified School District work tirelessly to serve our children and communities with care and the utmost professionalism, and whereas our teachers shape and influence young lives for a lifetime through their guidance and instruction, as well as by example, and whereas the future success of our children depends on the dedicated and conscientious instruction provided by teachers and other educators, and whereas the teaching profession collectively remains one of our noblest and most vital professions, and whereas the love of learning and the desire for excellence that our teachers impart to their students is the key to a bright and successful future, now therefore be it resolved that the Beverly Hills Unified School District Board of Education wishes to honor and thank teachers for their diligent and dedicated efforts to ensure all children have a quality education.
Thank you. Okay. So, um, move to approve. All right, so I'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Extentions, no's? Okay, Pam, it passes unanimously. So, I guess I'd like to...
And we're gonna do a quick picture, so...
Yeah.
Telly's here?
Is Telly here? Thank you, Telly. Dr. Bregge will take a nice picture, thank you. Thank you, Telly, and thank you, Dr. Bregge. Okay, um, I'd like to get a motion to approve, um...
I will go ahead and move to approve resolution 2017-2018 dash 033.
I will second.
Moved by Mr. Margot, seconded by Mrs. Hacker.
And it reads Classified School Employee Week, May 20th through 26th, 2018. So we're looking into the future here. Whereas the classified staff of the Beverly Hills Unified School District contributes significantly to the outstanding educational programs available in our district and are the heartbeat of our schools, and whereas the classified school employees are crucial partners with teachers, parents, and administrators in the Beverly Hills Unified School District, and whereas the classified staff is involved in nearly every aspect of education, including maintaining school buildings and grounds, providing secretarial, secretarial and clerical assistance, preparing and serving meals, assisting in the classroom, and many other specialized services, and whereas these dedicated individuals deserve recognition and thanks for the outstanding work they are doing, now therefore be it resolved that the Beverly Hills Unified School District Board of Education does hereby proclaim Classified School Employee Week in the Beverly Hills Unified School District from May 20th through May 26th, 2018, and does hereby pay tribute to the diligence, loyalty, skill, and expertise of all classified employees.
Thank you, Mr. Margot. At this time, I'd like to call up Carol Cornier, Pierre Hawley, and Andre La. Oh, sorry, let's vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Extentions? Okay, Pam, it passes unanimously. So now, can you three people come up? Thank you. Is that it, Dr. Bregge?
Yep.
Okay, wonderful. Let's see, we're at Agenda Hearing Period, Public Comment. We are now at Public Comment, correct? Okay, good. I'm gonna call people up in this order, so, uh, Bob Rubin, uh, Rhiannon Carter, I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name. Yeah, Bob, I got Bob, and then, um, Ms. Carter, and then Nana's, Dr. Nana's, Pyrnia, in that order. Thank you.
I wanted to say a, uh, few words about Teacher Appreciation Day. Being a graduate of, uh, Hawthorne and Beverly here before UCLA came into my life, I, uh, probably realized, uh, all the time how important my time here in Beverly, uh, was. As well, there's probably some influence into this, um, by my wife, Paula Anderson, who's an educator as well. So I jotted down a few things this afternoon about Teacher Appreciation Day that I'd like to share. Teacher Appreciation Day is a term that's almost humorous. These friends, neighbors, and relatives, we call teachers, have responsibilities that never stop. They don't even slow down. It hardly matters how many students they have or what subject they teach, the work just doesn't end. There's always more that's needed and more that's expected as well, there's more to be done and more to be given. Teacher Appreciation Day, these are the people to whom we need to show gratitude, thanks, and appreciation every single day, week, and month, and year for what they do. These folks daily bring to work their others-centered postures, never-quits attitudes, and never-give-up smiles. They aren't even on display for their own kids. Rather, your kids, and that couple's kids, and our kids. How special is that? We each owe these smart, studied, talented, dedicated, patient, committed, values-oriented champions, whom we call teachers, a big sign of appreciation, not merely today, but forever. Yes, schools are all about the kids, but standing beside every one of them on the mountain they climb is a teacher who gave his or her heart and soul for that student to enable them to stand alone and stand tall, to make us proud. Not just May 8th, all the time, let them know that they matter, that we are grateful, and that they have merited our warmest respect, and that our kids are better, more confident, and greatly enriched because of a teacher. What's that worth to a student, a family, a community, to our country? I think the answer is, it's worth everything. Thanks.
Thank you, Bob. Okay, Ms. Carter? Yes. Yes, you've ceded time. You have five minutes. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Rhiannon Carter, and tomorrow I will be 15. When I was almost two years old, my big sister Bridgette had her fourth birthday party. There was a piñata, and a cake, and a jumping castle in the backyard. I spent most of the day in the castle, jumping around and playing and having so much fun. However, the next day, my knees were very swollen. My dad said they looked like grapefruits. My mom and dad took me to the doctor, who could not find anything wrong. They thought that my grapefruit knees were from jumping so much. Put some ice on it, they said, it'll go away, but it didn't. We went to doctor after doctor. We saw eight doctors in four months. No one knew what was wrong with me. Finally, my family doctor said we should try a pediatric rheumatologist. The rheumatologist watched me walk 10 feet across the room and said, yep, she has arthritis. My parents didn't know anything about kids getting arthritis, like much of the world, but they learned quickly. Since then, I've been on all kinds of pills and shots and joint injections and stuff like that. I've even taken methotrexate, which is a form of chemotherapy. I take 49 pills a week currently. Some of them taste awful and make me really sick. When I was five, I started taking shots. I was scared about the shots, but I got used to the needles. Some of the shots really hurt, and I get bruises from them. I also spent three years getting infusions every month. I didn't like having an IV for hours at a time when I should have been at school, learning with my friends. I also have to get my blood drawn often, I hate that part. When I was eight, I decided I wasn't going to cry during my blood draws anymore. It isn't easy, because sometimes they have to poke me several times to find a good vein, and I have even fainted. But I try to be strong. Sometimes I feel better, sometimes my joints hurt a lot, and I can't walk, and I have to use my braces or my wheelchair. There is a common trend of arthritis stories, and mine follows that trend. Most kids have pain and swelling in one joint at first. Some have a trigger event, like me. Although the bounce house at my sister's birthday did not give me arthritis, it did make my arthritis known. Like every other arthritis, arthritis kid's family, my family was affected. My, my parents have to make the hardest decisions of their lives with meds, and side effects, and doctors, and medical insurance. My house has this long hallway, and the last room at the end is my parents' bedroom. A few weeks before I was diagnosed, I stopped walking. I just couldn't walk. And I went back to crawling. I crawled down the long hallway and crawled up onto my bed, on my parents' bed. My dad says that the, that that memory is the hardest part for him. Up until a year ago, my mom gave, gave me all of my pills, and took me to every appointment and school meeting, and gave me every shot. She gave me literally hundreds of shots. From methotrexate, to emerald, to humira, to orencia, that was the hardest part for my mom. Now I've learned to do all of those things for myself, including giving myself injections. My sister says the hardest part is when she sees me at school, not playing at lunch, or sitting on the bench during PE. Most of my PE experience has been bonding with the bench. And I loved it when it rained, because then everyone was inside and I felt included. Every once in a while, a kid broke their leg or sprained their ankle, and that meant I wouldn't be alone that week. In January, I finally heard the words I'd been waiting 12 years to hear. I was in medicated remission. I could finally taper off my medications. I did great for six weeks. Then the elevator in the SDC went out. After two weeks of stairs and walking further to another elevator every day, I began having pain and swelling in my joints again. We went to my doctor, who told me that my arthritis had come back because the elevator had gone out. Like the bounce house at my sister's birthday, the elevator, not working, was another trigger event for me. For three months, the elevator has not been working most of the time. Yes, it'll work for a day or two, or even a week, but then it breaks it down again. I'm here today because I wanted you to put a face to my story. That kid that you've been hearing about for the past three months, that's me. I wanted you to see me. I wanted you to hear my story. I am the one who has endured the pain from your inaction. I'm the one who has suffered. In the future, I'm hoping that I can count on your support. Thank you.
Wow. If I may say so, as a psychologist, thank you for sharing that. Good evening to everyone, and my name is Dr. Nana Spyrnia. I'm a psycho-neurotherapist. Uh, after getting my USC doctorate, uh, degree, I was an intern at the Beverly Hills Unified School District to get my degree, uh, in school psych credential. I've been with the school and district forever. I know the older faces more than the younger. Uh, I'm in private practice, and since I was at, uh, the Unified School District and realized that we need to come together and celebrate diversity and, uh, do things better, I started the Iranian-American Parents Association. It's a nonprofit, and then we started, uh, with the Beverly Hills, uh, School District to have seminars, candidate forums, workshops, uh, celebrate no rules, celebrate diversity, and multicultural, uh, events that we started. And the One Life to Live program is with the LA County Sheriff Department, and we take our teenagers to the jail, and to the probation centers, and then to NASA, and this is a five-step mentoring program to help them understand the meaning of not thinking and consequences, and to hopefully stay safe. Uh, with that said, I'm here today to invite you all and thank the school district, um, to co-sponsor this event with us. We're having a town hall meeting on, uh, June 3rd, Sunday, 3:00 to 5:00, at Salter Theater. In honor of everyone we lost to nonsensical shootings in our schools... in honor of everyone we lost to nonsensical shootings in our schools for the past over 300 of them, I can tell you that I know. As a psycho-neurotherapist, I realized that our kids are traumatized, our parents are somewhat anxious, but we don't really come together to understand the meaning of this and how to prevent it. This is for everyone ages 13 and up, and all our professionals. I invite everyone from the district and more. And we have the support of our schools, the Chamber of, the Beverly Hills Chamber of Commerce, the Maple Counseling Center, the Exceptional Children Foundation, the Bianca Foundation, the ISCC. The only, am I done? You said five minutes.
No, no.
Oh, mine is three minutes, sorry. I'm almost done. We will have a discussion and a panel, and then interactive conversation, all the topics from mental illness, bullying, what's the relationship of the cyber dangers, how to understand when to talk, when to report, addiction, violent acts, and much more. Admission is $10, and tickets, you can get it online, iranianhotline.com, or you can call me, you can check me out, Dr. Nana Spirnia, 877-5557. Together, we come together to heal. Thank you for having me.
Thank you. Ethan Smith, and then Telly C.
The last time we were here, Mrs. Korbitov asked if we enjoyed listening to "I Won't Back Down" being played before the meeting. I do like the song, but true to form, it was played over and over again in a very inefficient manner. Really, if you think about it, there couldn't have been a better artist for this little trick, Tom Petty. Too soon. Actually, I doubt Mr. Petty would have appreciated you using his song. Indeed, when George Bush did, Mr. Petty sent him a cease and desist letter. What better way, though, to literally broadcast to the teachers and the community that this board is only engaged in service negotiations until you can impose? This sort of pettiness and poor management is what has us in the situation we currently find ourselves. I've spoken several times now about the inefficient way you run our district, but it didn't have to be this way. Imagine if you'd acted on the recommendations of the FFST and the cabinet and the advice of students like Mr. Artal. The hard part would now be over, reconfiguration would be underway, the district would be saving millions, the salary formula wouldn't be an issue, and there'd be no scary letters from Laco. But I get it. Leading is difficult. You had a lot of angry parents here. But instead of you using Mr. Petty's song, I'd invite you to study the lyric, "Hey, baby, there ain't no easy way out." Instead of us hearing from you how you made those tough decisions and now boldly leading us into the future, we spent the last board meeting with you listening to us. Here are a few quotes from my colleagues. "I've endured incidents of retaliation and threats to my daughter from your staff, but intimidation tactics won't work. I'm begging you, get the elevator fixed now." Katie Carter. "Collaboration, working together, unity are buzzwords in education. Here we are, impasse. I'm devastated, I am sad, and my heart hurts." Molly Peterson. And, "Will my salary drop even more if the salary formula is rescinded? Will my family be in a better position if I were somewhere else? These are the questions I'm being forced to ask myself, and it's breaking my heart." Alexis Crane. Yes, you've been pretty hard on your faculty and staff, and looking at us and our T-shirts, you see us all black and blue. But all you have to do is change one little word from I to we, and your taunt becomes our theme, "We Won't Back Down." And we won't ask our members to stay here at these meetings when they can speak their minds, go home, and watch the rest on YouTube. If you'd been listening to us, you'd have heard us say, "We have long commutes, sick and disabled children, families that it's a sacrifice for us to be away from at night, and we, all of us, have jobs we have to wake up early for tomorrow morning that we can't be late for or on our phones during. Jobs we have to be measured and calm for, even after we have to come here and fight you about these ludicrous claims that we're the cause for your financial troubles. I'm sorry, it's just hard to believe when you fly two new counselor positions and the six-figure salaries that go with them, and it's also hard for us to believe and to consider the fact that keeping the salary formula would save $2 million for the district. I hope that you'll in the impasse actually negotiate with your unions and realize you can't do all this on your own. To be frank, however, after listening to my colleagues, I don't have a lot of hope. After all, Tom Petty's band, we're called The Heartbreakers."
Telly C.
Dear BHUSD community, I am here tonight to talk about the difference between actions and words, particularly those in the last few weeks. At the last board meeting, several curious statements were made by board members and district administrators. First, it was stated that none of the unions asked to meet to discuss the budget. Absolutely false, especially when our bargaining teams this year cannot depend on the business department to be present and prepared to inhabit at every meeting and to have the information we requested at each and every bargaining session. Second, it was stated by certain board members that teachers and staff do not stay at the board meetings long enough to be educated on the budget. Incorrect. Many of our members watched the board meetings online from beginning to end, discussed the inaccurate statements made, and we are now here to address them. Frankly, it does not take much effort to see the district claim financial difficulty and then make personnel and budgetary decisions that indicate otherwise. It is easy to draw this conclusion in person and online. Third, it was stated by a district administrator that the district and BHEA is at mediation and will soon go to fact-finding. Now, in good faith bargaining, such a statement cannot be made because both sides should be working to a resolution as quickly as possible. To make the statement that fact-finding is a foregone conclusion would be like using the word impasse at the beginning of the school year. You wouldn't do that. Wait, you did do that. Fourth, it was claimed by one board member that our bargaining team member Chris Boucher is misleading the community regarding the district's finances. Wrong again. Chris is widely respected by his colleagues and peers for his honesty, integrity, and effectiveness in the classroom. He and BHEA are telling the truth. In the district's newsletter yesterday, Dr. Bregge, you stated that you have never been more hopeful for a mutually beneficial bargaining agreement. These are nice words to hear, and I believe you really feel this way. But right now, we need more than your words. We need more than the words on a board resolution. Our Apple Award winners need more than words in their honor. We need action, action in the form of good faith bargaining and genuine collaborative partnership between the district and the staff. No more faculty filibusters to counteract school board blunders. What happens in the next few weeks and months remains to be seen. Do you want to be known as a district that fights all four of its unions at the same time, or do you want to be a district that appreciates an employee's both in words and in action? There is still time. Thank you.
I would like to ask the board if we could move just one item ahead of Mr. Tao's presentation. BHF Cindy Tross has asked me to please move up her presentation because she has an engagement she needs to get to for her son.
So that is item 12C.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for allowing it to be moved up. On the agenda, it says I'm going to be accompanied by Janine Raymar, Vice President. She is actually at City Hall with her son for the Youth and Government presentations being done, so I have the distinct pleasure of having our treasurer, Jonathan Forrester, be with me this evening. And the two of us together couldn't be more proud to be representing our Beverly Hills Education Foundation Board, and to be able to speak to you this evening and share with you some votes that we have taken in terms of funding that we're going to be allocating in the 2018-2019 school year to the school district. There's been a lot of talk within the district among parents, the communities, the teachers, and the students about social-emotional issues and concerns within the school district. And you have voted to have counselors now in all four of our K8s. We have a robust program with Ally Norman Franks here at the high school and all of our guidance counselors. And to that end, the Beverly Hills Education Foundation wants to be an innovator in programming. We want to help move things ahead and to be able to address the needs of the community so that we can create a learning environment that is going to benefit all of our students from their social well-being, their emotional well-being, their mental health, their physical health. And so with that, we are very happy to announce that we have allocated $215,000 to create a PBIS Coordinator. That would be a Positive Behavior Intervention Support Program Coordinator, and we would also fund additional program materials so that that can be laid out in the 2018-2019 school year. We feel that this is going to be someone who is going to work with all of the counselors and all of the schools to be able to come up with programs to support positive behavior strategies so that we can begin to address at an earlier age things like bullying and be able to find ways for our children to understand conflict resolution, and to be able to do that in an environment that teaches, you know, maybe today's bully is tomorrow's bully victim and vice versa. We want to make sure that we create a culture and environment where everyone feels welcome and respected and knows how to voice their thoughts and ideas and to be accepted for that. We also are going to fund $45,000 in a matching grant from an anonymous donor to pilot a program similar to what's called the Spectrum Program at Crossroads School, where, excuse me, New Road School, yes, forgive me. And that's a program that helps students with pragmatics, executive functions, social integration, and these things are all important because it has to do with teaching kids how language and context works, how your words mean something. And for some of our students who might be on the spectrum and some who aren't, that's challenging, especially for the younger ones in understanding things like sarcasm, or if someone's teasing, understanding the difference between teasing and bullying. So we're very happy to be able to join this anonymous donor to pilot this program next year, which we think is going to be beneficial. And last but not least, we voted to fund $183,000 for our K through 12 co-curricular programs, and those will be funds that will be spent directly in the schools and allocated by the principals. And that brings a grand total of $443,000 that we've allocated thus far, and we have more to allocate in future meetings to the Beverly Hills Unified School District for the 2018-2019 school year.
Cindy, thank you for your leadership. I want to thank all the donors. Your money makes all of this possible. And thank you for working so collaboratively with our superintendent and Laura Chisholm and the whole staff to figure out how to best, you know, deploy these monies.
Well, to that end, we're very proud to do that. And again, to all of the people that are watching in here this evening, it is only because of the support of the community, the teachers, that we all come together and the businesses that we're able to donate this money. So we appreciate all of their support as well for the Beverly Hills Education Foundation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments from board members?
I just would like to echo Mrs. Korbitov's sentiments. Thank you, Mrs. Tross and Mr. Forrester for all of your work, and also to your board for putting your heads together and coming up with solutions for our district, and of course, working with our staff. And, you know, I'm very excited, and I actually would like to make a request. I think it would be very well thought if they attended one of the Health and Safety Commissions to talk about PBI and the efforts that are planned for that program, because I think it would very much be in step and stone with what they achieve and try to pursue in that commission. So I invite you, and we'll coordinate. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay, we're now at staff presentations, item 10, 10A, presentation by Terry Tao regarding construction of parking at Beverly Hills High School. Thank you, Terry.
Thank you very much. I was asked to, by the board, to give some idea of what it is that has been going on with regard to some of the items that are listed on the future priorities with regard to the district. And it is one of those things that is particularly difficult when you're dealing with attorneys, because attorneys want to kind of keep everything under wraps, and we have been talking about this a lot. So just to kind of give the audience an idea of what has been going on over the past many years is MTA, the Metropolitan Transportation Administration, has planned to put a subway underneath Beverly Hills High School. That's fairly well-known, and that fight has been ongoing for a very long time. The district has also been fighting the fact that recently MTA decided that it would be putting its lay-down area on the West Fence Line against the school, which is particularly troubling since you're going to have noise and vibration, what's called PM 2.5s, which is the smaller dust particles which are particularly difficult to get out of your lungs and cause asthma and other breathing difficulties. And also NOx and NO2, which is essentially ozone, all of which is not too terribly good for the health, including raising cancer risks. One of the other things that we've been discussing is the tunneling that's going to go directly beneath the high school so that people have perspective. The tunneling goes directly underneath the district offices, then passes through the high school. From the high school, it goes underneath the tennis courts, under Building B1, underneath exactly where it is that the old lacrosse field was, which is now the location where the temporary classrooms are. And then the lay-down area is literally against the fence line. We've had a number of board meetings, and these were out of view of the public, so I'm going to lift the veil a little bit for the public so that you can see some of the things that the district's been dealing with. We had board meetings on this subject on August 29th, September 26th, and November 14th in closed session. So with that, I'll start the presentation. On January 26, 2018, the district filed a lawsuit against the Metropolitan Transportation Administration, I'm sorry, the Metropolitan Transportation Authority and the Federal Transportation Administration. That lawsuit, I copied a little bit and put it up on the screen. Of significance with regard to this is one of the subjects that is causing some significant costs with regard to the district. One of the things that the district had planned was to have parking built on the site, and there was some parking planned underneath Building C, which is the gymnasium. That parking had been submitted to DSA for a particularly long time. It was submitted sometime, I'm not positive of the date, sometime in late 2015 or so, and we were well along with regard to those plans. In August of 2017, when the district was about ready to receive their permit to actually be able to move forward and to work with these DSA plans, Metro, MTA, went to the Division of State Architect, which is the agency responsible for planning and approving plans for schools. And they stopped the approval process with regard to not only the parking structure for Building C, but killed the Building C project altogether. So that project has been put on hold, not through any action of the district, but solely because of the actions of MTA. So that is actually in this very, very long lawsuit at paragraph 88. What this does is that since it's in a public document, it allows us to lift the veil a little bit so you can see what it is that the district has to deal with, with some of the actions that have been taken by this outside agency. So this was one of the packages that was submitted to DSA. It's called Package 1. It's for site. What this was meant to do was to get an approval so that it would be possible to actually build portions of the parking structure. So this is what's called the CCD, which means that the plans were very far along, and this was just so that the district could proceed with what was necessary in order to do the actual construction of the parking lot. The submission date was August 23rd. So as far as a CCD was concerned, what DSA had told us was it would be two weeks to a month before the permit would be issued. a month before the permit would be issued. That didn't necessarily mean that the district would immediately start construction. That would mean that the district was secure with their project, approved through all the agencies that we would need to get approved through, and able to plan for a period of between two and three years is what it is that those plans are good for. But it would give the district something solid to price with and plan with. This was something that we actually found out. This was a document that was submitted by MTA with their supplemental environmental impact statement that was published on November 20th of 2017, and the district received on November 30th of 2017. The red line and the blue line were actually added by us. There was an earlier version of the document, but was not quite as definitive as this one. The blue line is actually the line that would show the bottom of what is called Building C. The red line is the top of the footing for Building C. The kind of diagonal line is MTA Tunnel. So you'll see a block kind of in blue that is the actual building, and the line that goes a little bit from the lower part of, lower right-hand to the middle part of the screen is actually the MTA Tunnel that would go directly underneath the school site. So now we know why it is that MTA killed the subway, killed the Building C parking project. It appears that the Building C parking project was actually interfering with the subway line that MTA so desperately wanted to put underneath the high school. Here is the actual letter that we received on September 6th from the Division of State Architect. Doug Humphrey is actually the head of the LA Office of DSA. They basically said that MTA went down there, told them that there was going to be this tunnel that was built, even though representations that have been made so far were that everything was in planning and subject to review with regard to the environmental impact report that was, or that was still undergoing review. And they made it so that our project would no longer be approved by DSA, has been kicked out of DSA. So essentially, with regard to Building C, we've lost approximately three years. So that left us in a position where we had to look for options. One of the directives and something that is important to the district is the ability to have parking on the high school site. Whether it is parking for, from Building C or likewise, we needed to find alternatives. So Building C, if it was to not have parking, our options would be to put parking underneath the football stadium and to elevate that stadium on a football field and elevate the football field on a platform or a deck, and then build the lights and the bleachers on top of that deck. The other option, option number two that we looked at was the possibility of building parking underneath the historic lawn. As many of you know, the historic lawn actually goes up in elevation, which would allow us to essentially hollow out the inside of the historic lawn and put parking underneath there, as well as one level of parking so it wouldn't interfere with Metro underneath the Building C gymnasium. And another option that was considered was raising the district office and placing parking there. Just to kind of give everybody an idea of what the costs would be in order to do this, this is significantly more than what the cost was originally anticipated for doing the parking with regard to Building C. That cost is pretty easy to figure out, and we're probably even low on the number. If we did 400 feet across for Option 1 and 1,000 feet for a football field, you're roughly looking at $200 a square feet. That's $80 million right there. So that's where the $85 million budgetary number came from for parking. And the reality is, it's really not parking. It's parking plus a football field. All of the items associated with a football stadium, including bleachers and the like, would go above. This is actually a drawing that we had prepared, or the facility staff had prepared, of how many parking spaces associated with a parking lot underneath the football field. That's just a cross-section. The football field would go on top. The reason why we thought it would be helpful to actually talk about this is, unlike you, the public, the board has been briefed by facility staff and lawyers in closed session, but none of this has been brought to the public. We wanted to make sure that you are aware of what it is that the district is grappling with, on top of the fact that there will be a lay-down area where it shouldn't be, which is directly against the west wall, the west fence line of the high school. And the district will be facing approximately seven years of construction at that west wall, where they, where Metro will have the entrance for the planned blue line subway. So with that, any questions?
I'd like to begin by thanking you for the presentation. It was informative, and I appreciate that we're broadcasting this information to a wider audience at this point. What I was curious about, are there any points over the course of construction at the high school where we anticipate there being no opportunity for students to park? Any in-between points in the construction where students really won't have anywhere to be?
The facilities team, and I'm not, I'm just the attorney. But the facilities team has been trying to plan for parking. As you know, there's parking at Building A, there's this parking. So they were trying to coordinate so that there would be some option of parking. Obviously, this is a very costly to have switch over, for example, if you're building Building A, to make sure that this parking is available. So that would be options that would be presented to the board for their decision.
Okay, thank you. And what I would note is that it's, it needs to be a priority, I think, of this board and any construction team that we work with, that we try to look at contingency plans. What are ways that we can ensure that there are parking options available for our students? And just because we have parking available, obviously not all of that's going to go to students because we have to accommodate our staff. And so having 20 to 30 parking spots for students is not appropriate. And it's severely limiting for these students, and it limits their ability to attend school and get the most out of their experience. So looking forward, I hope that we can work with our construction staff to find solutions in that.
Thank you. Mr. Spitz?
Yeah, I just want to add that, so that, to be sure that everybody understands that no decision has been reached with regard to how we're going to find and provide additional parking at the high school. No decision has been made. And there even are options in addition to what you've seen on the screen that the board will be talking about. Thank you.
I concur with Mr. Spitz's statement. And Terry, I'm sorry, Mr. Blake isn't here today to answer, but maybe somebody can from the construction team because I think it's important to explain to the public that the parking portion of the project is perhaps the very last project that gets done if Measure BH passes. And the reason for that is because we don't have plans. So, you know, I think as Mr. Artel stated, we need to have parking, but also as Mr. Spitz has made clear, we don't have any plans at this point. And when the plans do get put together, it probably, project-wise, would be the last phase of a building that gets done. Is this not correct?
That is correct. Building C is now a non-viable project. It has been taken offline by, I'm sorry, Building C's parking has been taken offline by DSA. So that would mean that the budget figure is available for the board to strategize with. These are just options. It doesn't mean that it would be something that would be necessarily done. I know that there are other options beyond just the ones that were presented.
Terry, for being here tonight.
Mr. Telle, just to follow up on your comment, just for clarity, the building itself, the new athletic building above ground is still viable?
Yes.
That can be built?
Correct.
Okay. The football with subterranean parking or parking underneath, you're talking something, and at least my understanding of the plans or the plans for Option 1, would be something similar to what UCLA has for their practice field. Is that, that's my understanding from facilities, is that your understanding when you mesh facilities with legal?
Yes. I am not that familiar with the practice field at UCLA, but I've seen many fields like that, and they're somewhat complicated because, you know, they have drainage and all types of things that are necessary to have a real football field on a concrete deck.
Mr. Goldsna can also point out that Horseman has a model of a field over a parking lot.
Right. But this would actually, because of the grade for Moreno, it's actually, the field actually sits up above the street. So that's part of where the parking would be, it'd be somewhat, although somewhat below grade, it potentially could be a little bit above. And part of the increased cost on this has to do with, and remember that we had to do quite a bit of analysis, a lot of work with regard to when we spiked, when we wanted to put in the portables at the high school because of the natural flow of rains over millennia. There was a few hotspots in arsenic, I think six spots with a little bit of dirt. I think the total soil removal was about one ton, about 2,000 ounces of soil that had to be excavated and then fresh oils put in. Part of the increased cost of this would be the fact that you would have to remove all that soil, and that's a special project that would be fall under DTSC.
That is correct. Yes.
And then there's also additional cost if a parking Option 1 is in play. And again, as Mr. Spitz indicates, Ms. Hacker indicates, no decisions have been made with regard to where that parking will be placed now. There would have to be methane mitigation with regard to any type of structure, parking or otherwise, underneath that field.
Yes, just so we're all clear, the Beverly Hills High School, as I understand it, has what's called a health and human risk assessment that has been done. The site is perfectly safe to operate as a high school. But what happens is, this is a historical oil field. Before the high school existed, it was used as an oil field and had oil wells all over it. So the leftovers from years past, what I call sins past, are still buried there as little gifts for you to spend lots of money on. So every time you dig into the ground over there beyond just the surface level, which is safe, you're likely to run into something that will cost you a significant amount of money. So that's, that is something that was considered with some of these options so that as little digging as possible would be utilized to try to save as much money as possible for the district. But yes, there will be some that would be required. And by the way, one ton is not a lot.
No, I know that, but this would be significantly more than one ton.
Significantly more.
Okay, thank you very much for the clarification.
Just piggybacking on what my colleagues here said, first of all, Ms. Hacker, you said it's the last project under, yes, it's five to seven years out. And that's really important to stress because a lot can change in five to seven years, and we study variables in school and science and things like that. The variables are very flexible in this situation. There is four series of suggested bond sales with Measure BH. It would be part of the last series. You don't have to sell it if you decide not to do it or shift to something else or put it in a future bond measure. Nothing is tying anybody in. I highly doubt, I know I will not be here in five to seven years, and I don't know if anybody else will, but I think it'll be a completely new board that will be left, at least in the next two years, will be focusing on the current construction. After that, those decisions can be made. The ideas for Building A are flexible also and can change, and therefore that ripple effect would affect parking. Jonathan, I 100% agree. The whole reason this conversation came up in the first place was when we were told that if we take a hammer to Building A for any reason, we have to shut down the parking lot. If we shut down the parking lot, we have to have alternative parking. That began what I like to call the common sense conversation about this. There was debate about where it should be, there still is, but we have options right now. We are sitting in a building that was built on what used to be a parking lot for this school. They got rid of all of those spaces when they built this building. Great, new building, science, math, love it, perfect. We couldn't, where would we meet without it, right? Be sitting in a parking lot doing this meeting. But what I think that the lesson learned is, if you're going to get rid of parking, you've got to think long-term and be able to plan ahead. So I hope that no matter where we go in the future with this, whether it's this board or a future board, that they seriously consider what Mr. Artal is saying, that parking is part of the plan. And I've said it before, parking is like closet space. It's hard to complain that you have too much of it. It really is. Now, we don't have to get excessive with it, but there's a demand for the community on parking, there's a demand for students on parking. I think we are not overflowing at this point, but we're near it. And if this construction is complete at this school and more people flock back to the school because that's a reason why people haven't been coming, that's an obvious reason, are we going to need the parking for them as well? So these are all questions for us to keep in the back of our mind and for a future board to answer succinctly. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tao, can you tell us one other thing that will impact the campuses? I believe we call them a cross path, since we're already talking about the impacts to the campus. There are cross paths, two on Wilshire Boulevard. One is directly in front of the Jewish Federation. I think one is even closer west. And can you explain what a cross path is that Metro puts up and where they're putting it up here and the impacts to us and to the community?
Of course. About three weeks ago, we were, we learned that there will be cross paths put in. And what a cross path is, is every 90 feet in the subway, there are two tubes. There's one going west and there's one going east. The two tubes need to be able to connect. So if a maintenance person or if there was a problem with either one of the tubes, it would be possible to either walk or make it over to the other tube. There are two planned with regard to the Beverly Hills High School campus. Let's see if I can do this. Oh, this doesn't have a pointer. Let's see. If you go to where the word Option 4 is, the line is supposed to go directly just north of where the O is. There is supposed to be a cross path in that location on Moreno Drive. What we were told was Metro plans on excavating down instead of a cross, meaning if they use a tunnel boring machine and they go underneath approximately 70 feet under the site, they could just dig across between the two tubes. That's not what they're going to do. They're going to excavate Moreno Drive, they're going to go straight down in order to build this cross path. And that will result in the closure of Moreno Drive for a significant period of time. We don't know how long. The other cross path that is planned is actually planned on the fence line with regard to the building. So if you go directly above where Building B1, the word N... So if you go directly above where Building B1, the, the word N, or the word, or the letter D, there's supposed to be a cross path right around that location. Right now, the drawings show the cross path is actually directly underneath the fence line. When we complained about it, Metro said, oh, oh, no, we're probably not going to put it there. They'll probably put it on the other side of the fence. But still, there's going to be a cross path somewhere in that laydown area directly against the fence line.
And the cross path is 180 feet long, correct?
It is, let me think. I don't know if it's 180 feet long, but it has to actually cross both of the tunnels. So there is an example of it, I think, that's being constructed right now.
Well, there's one on Wilshire Boulevard, right in front of the Jewish Federation building. So if you're driving west to east, you can't even see the building because it's very long, but there's very tall scaffolding, so it's hard to see across to the other side, as well as, it looks like it's almost two lanes wide.
It's probably more than two lanes wide, but two lanes is approximately 40 feet. So it may be as much as three lanes, which would be about 60 feet, but it, it would cause a very significant problem with Moreno. And what we were told was that Moreno would likely be closed.
So Moreno's closed. Do we know how long the cross path is there? And there's obviously, as you said, a cross path at the, at the fence line.
We do not. We've heard a minimum of six, six weeks, but I, my impression is it's going to be longer. And the reason we heard about the six weeks was, that was what was presented in one of the presentations with regard to Wilshire. I do not know what it is that's planned for this location. It's a lot more constrained than Wilshire. And there are also limitations on when they can do construction in this particular location because it's residential. So I don't know how much more that that would lengthen out their construction process.
So then, Terry, as well, there are impacts with our, with the Venico site cleanup and all the trucks and cars, as well as our own construction on fulfilling the Measure E part of the bond. So have we in any way figured out, and obviously we've been communicating with Metro and all that stuff, but have we figured out how we're going to create a traffic path or a flow? How are kids going to get to and fro? How are parents going to drop off pickup if Moreno is shut?
Has not been figured out yet. In fact, we have requested a meeting with Metro. We do not have it yet. My belief, if I remember correctly, is it's been set up for the, around the 15th of this month. Dr. Bregge and I will both be there, as well as your eminent domain attorney, Gail Connor, where we'll be discussing with them what their plan is with Moreno. Frankly, we would rather ask them to spend the extra cost and not disrupt Moreno is what we're asking for. We don't know if that will be respected by Metro or not. They haven't been too terribly flexible with something like that. They tell us that they want to go from above.
So if they go from above and they bump into something, longer, more noise, more disruption, basically?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. So it's the same idea as when the tunnel boring machine, in theory, goes across the campus, heaven forbid, and they hit an oil well casing. If they're under a building, how do they get to the TBM to fix it?
If it's under a building, so, so let me take a step back. A, this, this site has a number of abandoned oil wells. Some were abandoned more recently, some were abandoned long ago, some of them are undocumented because the site was used as an oil field for many, many years before even the existence, really, of these types of records with the Department of Oil and Gas. Many of these old lines have a substantial amount of pressure from methane. And if it's, if one of the lines is hit, the capping operation could take a couple of days and is a fairly substantial operation. What I've been told is if one of these lines happens to be under a building, the only way to take care of that is to demolish the building and then take out the line. So essentially, they would have to take out the building, level it, and then use their, a, you know, a wild well contractor to take care of the methane and the fire that would be occurring.
Can I also just add, because I was actually at a meeting where...
Was that the meeting we were at, Dr. Bregge?
Right, and Mr. Spitz was at this meeting too, because we, we started to ask about what if these things happen, because our students are on campus. And so the question was, what happens if we hit one of the oil casings or if we hit one of the oil wells that's not properly documented? And the, the answer from the Metro execs were, quote, "Well," as they looked around the room, because they weren't really sure how to answer that, but they said, "We will have to just deal with that if and when that happens."
Then I asked, and I was the one who asked that question because of Big Bertha in Seattle, and they told me, I said, "Well, isn't it true that potentially, if a building's there, you would have to remove the building?" And they very sheepishly said, "Yes." But they don't expect that to happen. They don't expect anything bad to ever happen. And that's what's been going on with Big Bertha. And Big Bertha only hit a water casing. This is oil casing, and there's, you know, we, we've been told 70 to 80 abandoned oil wells across the campus. So having said that, do we understand the methane migration when they're digging the cross path on either side, you know, one end or the other? Do we understand what methane mitigation they're working on if, once they start using TBMs across the campus? Any of this?
They did not address much with regard to the methane mitigation that Metro planned with regard to their SEIS. What they have told us and what is documented in both the original EIS and the SEIS is that essentially their tunnel, tunnel boring machine creates a, a completely self-contained environment that's airtight and watertight. And therefore, they just plan on going directly through whatever they run into, whether it's oil, water, methane, they just plan on going through it. They did not plan any, as far, as far as we know, any sort of methane mitigation with regard to their lines. They very well might, it's not shown in their environmental documents.
So Terry, it's true in the environmental documents that they basically describe the safety factor of their tunnel boring machines in regards to methane, but not the environment directly around or above the TBMs.
Actually, that's fair. What, what they primarily talk about is if they ran into something that they were more concerned with the damage to their machines than the damage to the areas outside. Much of what we're talking about is actually in a very extensive comment letter that Jennifer Racine from the Casowitz Farm sent to Metro. It's all public record, it's many, many pages. It goes through the law, it goes through the, the risks, the air quality problems, the increased cancer risks, the vibrations, the possible, all the possibilities are gone through within the comment letter that is actually responded to in the SEIS.
Mr. Goldstein?
Unless anyone else has. So to summarize, people ask us why we fight, why have we been in this litigation with Metro? Well, Metro changed the original alignment that was supposed to be from Wilshire and Santa Monica right through our neighborhood. Metro has now put our gymnasium construction on hold, causing us to relocate our parking at a potential increased cost of 40 to $45 million. Now I'm hearing that they're potentially, or they will be closing Moreno. They may be on our campus building those cross paths. They'll be closing streets like Lasky, Work Your Way Back, that's Moreno, Lasky, Spalding, every street working back to Wilshire, to that station that's going to be on Wilshire. They'll be doing these cross paths, impacting the community. They've now decided, they've moved their laydown area that used to be on Wil, at Avenue of Stars and Constellation, is now sitting right behind those portables where our students are learning. If you've been by either Gail or Museum Square, or even what the Hancock Park community went through when their staging area was there, and what that community had to go through, we're trying to educate children here. That's, that's really what we do. It's going to be a major construction project right on their back door. Noise, vibration, diesel trucks, you name it. Not NOX2. And think about this, Metro's still four miles away from us, and they're causing these problems. Wait till they're here in two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight years and see what your schools look like if we don't do something now. And with that, I'm truly, and I hope they're watching, I don't know if they have a meeting tonight, but I'm truly calling on the city council to help us with this, to mitigate the harms that can occur. We can only control our property, city has everything else. I'm calling upon them, I'm imploring them to help us with this. It's that important.
Thank you, Mr. Goldstein. So Terry, you'll keep us posted, and what we can divulge to the public, we will?
Yes.
Absolutely. And I know the laydown area is right at the fence line. And in court, the city attorneys and our attorneys caught the subterfuge by FTA and MTA, that it was 1,000 feet, it was 100 feet, and they sheepishly admitted it right there in court. So having said that, I would like to say truthfully, pretty much we've discovered almost nothing they tell us is 100% certain or accurate, either by design or just by sheer incompetence. So it doesn't leave us really feeling very confident. But what I want to say is, with the laydown area, my concerns are, I know very soon they're knocking down buildings right behind us, and they're building walls, a wall.
That's correct. Actually, I, we were able to avert one of the more significant disruptions that would have occurred on campus. What Metro had done was they had planned to tear down the parking structure associated with the AAA building to commence in late April. That, Dr. Bregge sent a letter to Metro basically saying that would be disastrous for the district, it'd be in the middle of testing. Can't you just push this until after the graduation occurs in June? So Metro stopped that operation, even though they've acquired the buildings and were ready to commence. So we, that was a good move on the part of Dr. Bregge's part. And that parking structure, looks like it will be torn down during the summer, when you won't have that many kids in, in the portables. In fact, my understanding is the kids would be in Building A, so pretty far away.
Okay, thank you. I just want to echo what Mr. Goldstein said. We implore the public to get engaged, we implore the public to speak up and speak out and contact your elected officials, your senators, Congressman Ted Lieu, Secretary Chow, Secretary DeVos of Education, the President of the United States. This is no joke. This is an existential threat to this campus and to this city. And I don't know where the school district will be if this high school is rendered really, you know, very compromised for many years and maybe for the foreseeable future. So I implore the public to please, the board and boards before me have carried this burden, and we're proud to do it. It's our job as elected officials, but I implore you to all get engaged and get involved, and our city council to please rally with us. We need help, we need help at all stages and phases of this, this impending problem, this doom and gloom. Thank you, Terry.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right along, yeah, we have one thing. I'm going to make a motion to approve the consent calendar, minus item 11A.
Okay, move, excuse me, moved by Ms. Margot, seconded by Mr. Spitz, and you've pulled item A.
Yep.
So let's discuss that.
Let's vote on the consent.
A vote on the consent, sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Extentions, it passes unanimously. Now we can discuss item A.
So I had asked Mr. Margot if he could pull that. I asked some questions about the Naviance program, and I don't think I received the answers. So I'd like to see if we can possibly pull it for reconsideration for the following meeting. I also, as a board member, I wasn't here when they approved Naviance the first time around, but would like to understand, how is it working? And how is it being implemented? Is it being effective? And I'd like to know that information, because we shouldn't be approving things just for the sake of approving things, because they're about to run out as far as the contract. So I'm not saying it's not working, I just really would like to be more informed. And as I said, I didn't get my questions answered on time. I'm sure you probably did, I just didn't see them.
I just want to, because we just got them today, though.
Right.
So today was a really crazy day.
In the morning.
We tried to be as responsive as we can.
Well, and I actually answered them and put them on a different Google back, so I apologize. But, no, so Naviance is in my wheelhouse, and this is something that I actually stand behind as far as a curriculum adoption. So just for clarification for the community, two years ago, when the board was able to approve college counselor at the high school and be able to bring in that resource to our students, one of the things that comes along with it is also the curriculum, to be able to support our students in that post-secondary selection. Naviance is a system, it's owned by Hopson's. It is a system that not only assists our students in being able to do things like Strength Finders, which helps us identify whether or not students are auditory learners, to be able to support them in not only their studying strategies, it allows us to create four-year plans for freshman students, so we can go ahead and do that long-term goal setting. It helps us build resumes. In addition to, and Jonathan just lived this, it walks them through just that post-secondary selection options. There's large search engines with inside the actual curriculum itself. And we are still, I would say that in my former life, it took us probably anywhere between two to three years for full implementation from the sixth through 12th grade. With the addition of the two additional school counselors in the K-8 buildings, I believe that it was very difficult for our K-8 buildings to really implement the curriculum to authenticity, because they were delivering the curriculum, not being able to follow up with a further discussion or question, and then having to leave to go to the other campus the next day. One of our plans is to be able to look at the curriculum in the K-8 buildings to ensure that next year we have an action plan, we have a pacing guide, and that our, our four counselors will be able to go in and do additional work around that career and college readiness opportunities, primarily focused on our middle school for next year, within the following year being able to seep down into fourth and fifth grade. At the high school, we do use it extensively, and we are planning to continue. I just had a meeting with our high school counselors on March 7th to look at additional ways that we're going to be able to implement around career and not just always focus on post-secondary. We want them to identify with a career, tie it to a college major, and then start to apply to post-secondary options. And so that's one of the things that we are going to be working on, is how can we get and push into more classrooms to deliver this curriculum? Right now, it's more one-on-one. The freshman students over the last year have been meeting one-on-one to create those four-year plans. And then Ms. Rowley and Michelle in our College and Career Center have been assisting the students with utilizing this system to apply for post-secondary options. There was a lot of information, I apologize. I love it. So ask what...
Yeah, if I could just jump on that a little bit. So I have had some experience with Naviance over the past several years. What I would say is that Naviance is a very robust tool with a lot of potential, but the implementation, at least from my class year, has not been very robust. Naviance has a lot of functionalities that, at least my class year, didn't get to take advantage of. For example, there are tools that you can use to communicate directly with your admissions counselor. There are tools where your counselors and your teachers can collaborate on letters of recommendation, where you can upload profiles that your teachers can use to better assist you in that process. And unfortunately, at least my class year, did not have a lot of individualized instruct- And unfortunately, at least my class year, did not have a lot of individualized instruction on how to use Naviance, and how you could get the most out of all these really incredible capabilities. And so I'm happy to approve the extension of the Naviance program, but that comes with the caveat that we really ensure that we implement it right. And I know that the younger grades have had more experience with it than I've gotten, and I know that they're already speaking much more highly of it than I know my peers have.
You mean younger grades in high school or in middle school?
Ninth to 10th graders. I'm not saying that they have the best exposure they could have, but certainly more than we've had. And I would say that we really need to improve, increase the number of times where students have instruction from our counselors, Ms. Rowley, other individuals on how to use these programs. And we also need to improve the collaboration in terms of the college process, how we can ensure that our college counselors are communicating with our middle school students, make sure that they understand this software before they get to the high school, that they understand the processes involved in getting into college and preparing for some future career, before you show up on campus and are a bit lost with the Naviance program.
Mr. Seaman, is it possible, does this have to be voted on tonight? Because what I would like to see, if this came back with some sort of implementation plan. It says that we've had middle school on there for two years since 2016. My child in middle school has not heard of this at all.
Right.
At all. So this is what I'm concerned about, much like we went through with the textbook discussion. I don't want to do it on a wing and a prayer. I'd love to bring it back with a solid implementation plan that we know we're getting the most out of it for all the students.
Absolutely. I just want to add to this is, so I was one of the first pilots, and so this was happening before I even got here, so that's the good thing to know. But I was one of the first pilots in the northwest suburbs about 11 years ago. And like I stated, it takes about two years to, close to three years for implementation, meaning with the proper support, me, and training, and opportunities to articulate to some of our staff members, because to deliver it with authenticity, you actually have to be able to push into some of the classrooms. And that's part of that culture that we're working on currently, is to ensure that we are going to be able to go into the eighth grade, let's say, English coursework, and have them start selecting one of the 60 national career clusters, and then being able to tie it into the elective course. And that's what we really tried to push and get off the ground this year with a little resistance, and that's what we're going to continue to work on moving forward, to ensure that every student has access to it. In my former life, in the implementation plan that you guys will see coming forward, Mark Mead, myself, and all of the counselors have already started to work on this since March 7th moving forward, that you should have an expectation that we would go in fall and spring, at least two access points, where counselors are able to meet with the students and work on transition in the fall. By spring, we start to introduce again the career selection portion, which leads into sophomore year around interest inventories for post-secondary, and then going into the college and university junior year, which then by senior year, done, right? And that is our goal. Part of that goal, too, is creating an advisory group around the counselors, and some of you will be asked to participate on that, to set those goals fall and spring. So yes, we can bench, we can move this off, I just wanted to give you additional information that's happening, that might not be available to the public.
I appreciate, I would really, for me, I think it would be very conducive to understand what the implementation plan is, so that, and also have an evaluation in there. How are you going to be evaluating progress? Because what we often hear is that every school does things differently, and so I'd like to really understand, you know, how effective is the implementation plan once it's revealed, and you know, we actually go forward and use it? Because I really, I hear that some students don't know what Naviance is, and so that tells me it's not being used, and whose job is it? And you described it's the counselors, but there's been, there's been some, it's not really, it seems like it's not really happening at all, the schools. Is school site council, that's another question, how are they tied into this, if anything? Because I think I've seen some of the schools in their yearly reports, what are they called? The school site council reports? I think some of the schools actually mention Naviance, and then some won't. So that just tells me that some schools are farther along than others. And so I'm not sure if you're pressed for time for your contract, what would you like to do?
And just part of it, too, you'll notice that I am also asking for a three-year contract, because each year, for the last two years of implementation, we have approved, and we're approving at the new rate, versus asking them to be able to be locked in at a current rate for an extended amount of time. Because really, the program should run 612, so it should look like a comprehensive program to support, if you look at the California dashboard, we have the college and career readiness standard that we're going to be held to, and that's part of that data point of whether or not this is working. Are our numbers increasing? Is our California dashboard changing? And part of that is, is holding our school counselors, you know, to that of utilizing this curriculum to be able to push that number far. I am a former school counselor, so I feel that, pretty confident that I could lead this charge, but that's not, we could still have those conversations with or without the curriculum. I believe that the curriculum is data-driven, and if you look at our counterparts like Harvard, Westlake, Palo Alto, Nutria, Mr. Spitz speaks of, they all have Naviance, but the implementation is where we need to really work on.
I think that one suggestion that I brought up several months ago, and that we in the student government class have spoken extensively about, is that part of the issue with the implementation is that, number one, Naviance and other unrelated college and career readiness programs aren't, either aren't integrated into the middle school experience, or that we don't have dedicated staff focusing on college and career readiness in middle school. We need to have dedicated staff per site, preparing students for what they're going to encounter in high school, and what they need to be on the path to do. That's difficult with four middle schools. We can try to make it happen.
We are hiring two counselors.
Two counselors is great.
It's a start.
But when you have four schools, and, I mean, I don't need to go there.
No. That'll be a counselor at every school, we're two additional.
Okay, that's great, that's a step in the right direction, but I think that you want to be able to have as robust a staff group as possible, so that you can host classes and programs, not just for one set of students at a time, but for a wider range of interests, and for, you know, all the students in our district.
Do you guys mind if I, can I just, one more thing? Sorry. I don't get a lot of chances to hit this button, no. The other thing that I just wanted to bring to your attention, too, and I had shared with the board a couple of times, is Recognize Aska Model Program, which is American School Counseling Association's dedication to prove that school counselors are delivering appropriate curriculum to their students in a proactive and not reactive way. Some of the conversations that we've had at the high school with administration and our school counselors, and they're excited and geared up, is they want to work towards fulfilling and applying for the RAMP application by fall of 2019, because it needs to be a full year worth of data. And part of that is this, and that also the advisory committee. So all those things come into play when we start to dig into this application and start to see what's required of our school counselors to do, and these are their guidelines of delivering curriculum, running small groups around social-emotional learning, whether it's a divorce support group, or a group to support LGBTQ students. And so those are the types of conversations that we're really getting into the weeds with. I just want to put that on your radar as well.
Can I ask the board, would you like to table, well, I have one quick question with the Naviance. I've been asking around, apparently it's the tool that everyone's using, all the private schools as well? Harvard, Westlake, Brentwood, John Thomas, all of them?
Yeah.
Yeah. So there really is no choice, they've cornered that market.
They have.
It really comes down to, I mean, it's a leadership issue. You know, it's not about the number of programs that we have, it's about ensuring that the ones that we do have are being used with full fidelity, and really clear expectations. And so, you know, we're moving away from, and the audit has clearly showed this, that it's not a potpourri of things that you can and cannot use. It's picking things like this that are proven across the country to work, but be consistent and have those clear expectations about how to use it, and when we're using it, and training our staff, and holding them accountable for following these processes.
But it shouldn't be like a timeshare that doesn't get used, it has to be used.
Right.
Right, all the time.
So obviously, it's as good as using it. The more we use it, and target the use, and focus the use, and amplify the use, the better the product is. So I'm okay to table this, if all of you would like, but I think it's a fait accompli that we're going to have to do this. It's just what we should be focused on is an implementation program that comes back to us.
Right.
Right. So then, do you want to approve this, and then ask for an implementation plan?
Sure, we just have to like the implementation plan.
All right, so I'll move to approve of the contract with Hobson Naviance College and Career Readiness Curriculum for sixth through 12th grade.
I'll second. Moved by Mr. Goldstein, seconded by Mrs. Hacker. All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions, noes? Okay, it's passed unanimously. So thank you. You know what you have to do? Come back? Obviously, you know, we're meeting again on May 21, and then June, I don't know our dates, Dr. Breggy?
June 7.
June 7. So is that enough time for you?
That's perfect.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you, Dustin. So now, we're done with the consent calendar reports. That's right. So we're now with superintendent's report, item 12A.
So I've given some of my report earlier with our recognition, just want to, I don't know if anyone else had a chance to see the Arodeo musical, which was really outstanding into the woods. Fred Pinto is our staff member that directed that, and it was really outstanding to see some of our younger staff members get ready for the high school. Also want to point out that we're doing something new as a leadership team, we're starting to go and visit our schools. It's not a presentation, it's not about giving handouts, it's about having some face-to-face conversation with our staff, all staff, before or after school, it's voluntary, but it's an opportunity just to have some dialogue and some face-to-face discussions about really any topic. And we've already started those, and we've had some great discussion thus far. And just want to let you know that this is something that we'd like to do more in the future, just to get away from, you know, the prescribed faculty meetings and prescribed messages, where we're having some really good conversation. And then I don't do it very often, it's Teacher Appreciation Week, and we're so thankful for our teachers, and also want to thank our leadership team, our administrators, this is the busiest time of year, and I'm trying to meet with several of you, and it looks like it's June before we can get together, our schedules are so full. I mean, we're really burning the candle at both ends, and so I don't get a chance to do this very often, and I should do it more than I do, but I want to thank my team for taking on a lot of stress with a lot of our district challenges, but also keeping up with all the day-to-day work as well.
Dr. Breggy, just as a question, are these unscheduled site visits?
So, no, these are scheduled.
Oh, okay.
So, and we're trying something a little bit different to improve our communication. We have a staff connection that we do, where we share information with the staff each week, each Monday, but we're just, you know, we are scheduling them, but they're voluntary, and anybody that wants to show up, any staff member at all, it just gives them an opportunity. We were at Horace Mann yesterday, and I think we were, I think we stayed till like 5:00, I mean, it was pretty late. We didn't, we didn't leave until the last staff member was finished with us, so. But it was, it was a nice opportunity for us to meet some of the staff that we haven't met so far this year, and just keep open those lines of communication.
It's a great idea, thank you. And you're done with your report, Dr. Breggy?
Yes.
Okay. Item 12B, Student Board Member Report, Jonathan.
Dr. Breggy, I'd like to second your praise for our teachers and our staff, and also your praise for Arodeo's musical. They're fantastic, and I think that the opportunity to explore a theater program in middle school is something we should work to offer to all of our students, because you can see there, they're incredible. I'd also like to discuss some of the actions from our high school student government, which has been getting, working hard to advocate for causes that it believes strongly will improve the state of the school district. One of those is Measure BH, where we have student leaders volunteering, passing out flyers across the school district, creating informational videos with Kbev that we're distributing around the school and advertising, and we'll also be working at all of the open houses for the 4K8s, trying to advertise there. And also, I'm going to be speaking with Dr. Breggy later tonight, about how we can get students involved in the discussion over Metro, and how we can use students and their passion for their community and for their high school to really advance our cause when it comes to the conflict with Metro. I'd also like to congratulate all of our students who won their ASV elections. I'm going to be gone soon, I won't be the student board member much longer, but the kid who's succeeding me, Sean Tubby, is fantastic, he'll do an incredible job, I can't wait for you all to meet him if you haven't already. And speaking of me being done with this, all of our seniors are about to move on. So we had our prom last Saturday, in the coming weeks, we're going to have grad nights, senior sunsets, senior breakfast, and soon graduates, so it's an exciting time. And above all, I'd like to congratulate all of our college seniors, who on May 1st decided where they were going to go to school. So we had hundreds of students committing to places all across the country, they're fantastic, and we wish them the best of luck.
I just wanted to ask Mr. O'Toole, is, I think I saw something about a student voter registration?
Yeah.
Is that occurring?
So that's something that...
That's something that we're currently working on. We are hoping to work with administration to actually try to get students to register to vote in their classes, regardless of what bond or issue or election candidate they want to vote for. We feel that students' voices should be heard. The issue with that is that students need to go in knowing their social security number and other pieces of information, so we're going to try to work with administration to get students to have that information on hand, when we offer them those opportunities during school time to register to vote and make their voices heard.
Thank you, Jonathan. And you have chosen to go where, to school?
By the state.
Congratulations. And you turned down?
I'm sorry?
You turned down where? Your mom told me.
A couple places, but...
One of them starts with an H and ends with a D, and it's in Cambridge, Massachusetts, you guys can all guess.
Howard University? That was close.
But, you know, we're so proud of you, and I'm actually kind of glad you're staying in California, because it's nice that you're not too far, you'll come back and visit us here and there, and especially your family.
Yeah, it's great to stay close.
And when you get your postgraduate degree, you'll come back, you'll make a decision, you'll run for the board, make a decision on the parking, you'll be great.
Love to come back.
All right, thank you, Jonathan, it was a great update, thank you so much. Your last board meeting with us is May 21?
I think it'll be the one after that.
Okay, June 7?
Yeah.
Wonderful, the more we can have you, the better.
Thank you.
Okay, we have already done 12C. Thank you again, BHEF, and your donors. We're on to 13, Human Resources, 13A, Approval to Hire Security Officers.
I'll make a motion for the hiring of security officers.
I'll second.
Moved by Mr. Margot, seconded by Mr. Goldstein. Any discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
As I understand it, this is a trial period that we're talking about?
Not for these positions, these are...
Oh, these are, these are our...
In-house.
CSDA.
Okay, fine.
In-house.
I'm good with that. Call for the motion.
Okay, let's call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions, noes? Pam, it's carried unanimously. Thank you. Thumbs up for Mr. Hertz. Thank you.
Okay.
We're on to 13B, Approval of the Classified Supplemental Early Retirement Program, SERP, also known as a golden handshake.
I will make a motion to approve the classified SERP.
I will second. Moved by Mr. Margot, seconded by Mrs. Hacker. Discussion. Okay, hearing none, seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions, noes? It passes unanimously. It passes unanimously. We're on to 14, Business and Finance. 14A, Approval of Ratification of Agreement for LaZano Smith LLP. I'll make a motion?
I will second it.
Thank you. Discussion.
Sure. I have a question. Can someone tell me what this is about?
This is the attorney that was requested by the investigator that is investigating the Title IX incident that we had. You have your investigator working, and they need counsel to advise you after the investigation is completed.
So the investigators requested this?
Yes.
Correct. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions, noes? Okay, passes unanimously. 15, Planning and Facilities.
Okay, I will lump some together here.
Do you want Jeff Palman to get up there in case we have some questions?
Let me throw them on the floor, and then people can ask them.
Okay, there you go.
I don't want to cause Jeff an unnecessary trip to the podium. He's comfortably sitting in the middle of the row. Could have moved down to the end long ago, but chose to sit in the middle. Okay, so I am going to go, I'm going to take care of the Horace Mann project, so I'm going to make a motion to approve the agreement to fast-track construction for Horace Mann Phase IV site work, for GA Technical Services for Horace Mann Electrical and Low Voltage Disconnect Project, for Edgar Garza Construction for Horace Mann Multipurpose Room and Selective Demo Project, with King Office Services for Horace Mann School Moving and Storage Project.
I'll second items 15A, B, C, and D.
Moved by Mr. Margot, seconded by Mr. Goldstein. Discussion.
Just a quick question. Are they still on target for about, and I think it was an October completion, the last time the board was updated?
Ah, he's going to the podium.
You knew that was going to happen.
I'm going to home on for that.
Correct. All projects you just mentioned are planned on being completed prior to the opening of school for the August, August school session, with the exception of one half of the site improvements at Horace Mann that will finish by October 8.
Okay, that's exterior site work, correct?
That's exterior.
So all the interior work, multipurpose room, all that will be finished?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, stay up there, Jeff. You never know. You're already there. Okay. Do you want to lump them again?
Call the question.
Oh, sorry. I was so exuberant. All right, I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions, noes? It carries unanimously.
Let me do these separate.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the award to Creative Cooling Technologies for Beverly Hills High School Evapo Cooling Tower Refurbishment and Maintenance.
I'll second that. I'll second that. Okay, moved by Mr. Margot, seconded by Mrs. Hacker. Discussion.
Everybody likes air conditioning.
Everyone. All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions, noes? It passes unanimously.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the agreement with Spectra Historic Construction for High School B1 and B2 Masonry Restoration Mockups.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Margot, seconded by Mr. Spitz. Discussion.
I have a quick question, just to confirm. I noticed that the, the subject on the item talked about buildings B1 and B2, but then the rationale, the narrative, talked about B1, B2, B3, and B4 needing this type of service, but the contract is only for, or this is only for B1 and B2, correct?
Correct. B1, B2, B3, B4 all have similar exterior masonry structures. During the lead abatement of B1 and B2, not only the lead paint was removed, but also some of the grout material between the masonry units also came off during that process. So what we're doing with this contractor, or this consultant essentially, is preparing some mockups for different, different conditions on B1 and B2 that will also be the same conditions we will encounter at B3, B4. So that's why it was mentioned in the rationale.
Great. Thank you for clarifying. That helps. Thank you, Jeff.
And before we hear from the Preservation Society, these are, the mockups are real, are just restoration of the block veneers with regard to the buildings.
The block veneer face, the mortar in between the joints, as well as you'll notice that some of the concrete molding and casing on the building that has cracked or chipped. We want to check that for adhesion, life cycle, before we finalize that scoping doc to go to bid.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Okay, hearing no more questions. All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions, noes? Passes unanimously.
And I'll make a motion to approve the Construction Services Agreement for Phase 3-1A with Pro West Constructors for Beverly Hills High School Buildings B1 and B2 Modernization Project.
I'll second that. Okay, moved by Mr. Margot, seconded by myself. Discussion.
Yes, Phase 3-1A. Please describe the phasing nomenclature here. What does that mean?
Going back to Terry Tao's presentation at the, at the beginning of the board meeting tonight, you noticed that he had a site package that included the preparatory work of Building C. Title page was on one of his slides, and that was Phase 1. During, when the master plan was originally developed, B1, B2 was Phase 3. So the title on the plans stamped by DSA call this project, in addition to the B1, B2 Modernization, Phase 3. So we're keeping that nomenclature since it's on the plans itself. It kind of all parlay's back to the parking structure that Mr. Artal mentioned earlier. The parking is part of the puzzle that kind of changes the sequencing of the master plan. So we're going to continue with the Phase 3 since it's a part of the permit nomenclature.
Okay. Terrific. And when is work scheduled to commence upon approval?
We've currently planned to begin work the week of May 21, should it be approved tonight.
Okay.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions, noes?
Aye.
All right, I'm proud to say this passes unanimously. I just want to say thank you to Pro West for sticking it out and doing very good work. Thank you.
And this is the first contract approval in a long line of starting work and finishing work on our high school.
That is correct.
So we are very excited about commencing this.
I'd like to take the opportunity, if I could, to introduce the two gentlemen in the audience.
Please do.
Mike DiMarie is the Chief Operating Officer of Pro West.
Thanks very much.
Jeff Rising is our project executive for the B1, B2 project, and those two gentlemen have been pretty hard at work the last 120 days putting this package together, and hopefully we'll see more come rapidly in the future.
And Jeff Rising left his home every day very early from, I don't remember, Temecula?
Yeah.
To be at, Building B at Horace Mann, four days a week, so thank you. Thank you.
No, he just moved into the bell tower at the high school.
Is he going to clean up the graffiti?
Yes.
Thank you, Pro West. Thank you to all, all your hard work. Thank you. Okay. Oh my God, we're communication from the board members. We got here, it's only 7:05. Wow, okay. Mr. Artal, are you all talked out?
I'm all talked out.
Okay. Mr. Spitz?
Well, I think before we meet again, Mother's Day will come and go. I want to wish a very happy Mother's Day to everybody, and enjoy.
Thank you.
Just want to wish all the staff Happy Teacher Appreciation Day, a week, and also Classified Staff, I believe, is next week, correct? And to Mr. Bradbury, I was able to attend his, the performance at the Saban Theater, and I thought it was amazing, and so thank you to him and the students who did a fine job in their performance. And also Hawthorne is having their, their theater production, final one next week. I think it's called, where are you, Charlie Brown or something?
You're a good man, Charlie.
You're a good man.
That's it. So I encourage everyone to come out and see it, and let's see anything else going on. The Magicals are performing today and...
Next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday, yes. So congratulations to them and to everyone, and looking forward, and Happy Mother's Day.
I'm sorry, can I say something? I work hard.
Oh, yeah, it's 7:05.
Yes.
Yes. But fill out a speaker card on your way out when you're done.
Okay, well...
Thank you.
Again, I can't say this enough about how much I appreciate you guys, and I know it's a lot of work, but every time I come here, I know there's a lot of stuff on your agenda, but I don't hear how we're helping the kids like today, right now. As far as my son is concerned, again, this is not a complaint, it's a concern. I don't feel that the teachers really have that contact with the kids. And I've been here since 2003, and I've been in the district since 2003, and I've seen that. Again, it could be technology that's causing this problem, you know, you could get your grades, but I don't feel that the connection between the parent, the child, and the teacher is there. And like I said, I'm involved, I come here all the time, and I try to be fair, and I try to see what's going on with the teachers. And two weeks ago, when I was here, I did hear how unhappy they are, and I said to myself, maybe that's why. Maybe they feel that, you know, they're not invested in the school. I'm not saying that for everybody. I'm sure there's great teachers. Unfortunately, my personal experience, I haven't had that special teacher for my son yet. And again, this is not to complain, I'm just saying that it's a concern, and it's been a concern for many, many years, and I've said it many times, and I've never get anything back. Again, you've been here a very short time. I've been here since 2003. So this is a problem, I think, that's been here, and I don't think it's just this school. I think it's a society that we live in, there's a lot of disconnect, but I think it's still important to have what they call, like I said last time, customer service. The product is the child. We're here to educate every child here, and I feel that a lot of children are falling through the cracks. In fact, I have a friend, she just called me today, saying that her son doesn't want to come to school, to this school. He's had so many problems, so difficult to get in touch with the, with the teachers, difficult to get in touch with a counselor. It took me six months to get in touch with my son's counselor. Six months. Again, I'm not saying that she's a bad person or anything, maybe she had a lot of stuff. I don't know. Maybe they're overwhelmed, I don't know. All I'm saying is, this is my personal experience, and I've, maybe there's two teachers I never met. I've tried to contact them, and it's like, if I was a teacher and I have a parent who's trying to contact me, I will be a very happy teacher. Yet, I feel that that's not the case. I feel that they're not, they don't want to talk to me, and that's hurtful, and I don't understand that. And like I said, maybe it's something that I don't know what's going on, and it's a bigger picture. Again, I'm just coming in here and there, they're here all the time, but I'm telling you, this is a concern, and I think a lot of parents feel that way. They're just not here. As you see, it's only me. Every time I come here, it's me. Only time that I see this other parent is when, the last time I saw that was when you guys were changing the exterior of the school as far as the grass was concerned, there was a lot of children, a lot of parents here. But as far as the core of what kids are going through right now, as far as the quality of education, I don't see that here. And it's not that they don't care, I just feel that I don't, they don't feel they could be heard. I don't feel like I'm being heard. And I'm talking right now, and I don't know if anybody's ever going to call me and express that to me, and express my concern. I've written letters to you guys, by the way, in the past, and I've never got a response. Again, I'm here to help, not just my son, but every child. Every child that is in the school deserves a great education, just like Jonathan. I mean, he's like a role model.
Thank you.
I love watching him.
So please, would you fill out a speaker card, and I'll follow up with the superintendent?
Like I said, this is not to criticize you.
I understand.
No, and I appreciate the comments, and Mercedes, we've met before, and we're always welcome to have that conversation. And I just want to throw out, one thing that, that has been common this year is that we are identifying that there are some social, emotional needs of our kids, and so we are looking at programs. We just work with BHF on starting up a program. So we are having those discussions, and you can always reach out to us if you're not able to get in contact with somebody, but I certainly enjoyed meeting with you. I think that we had a good conversation with your husband and my team, and if you're having difficulty reaching out to somebody at the school site, or even if, you know, there are friends of yours that are calling you, please just redirect them to the building principal, and, and, you know, you should get a return phone call right away.
Okay, I'm here to be a tool, you see, because my son's here, and he's experienced it, and I think that's a good way to...
I understand.
...see how things work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mercedes. Board comment?
Great, thank you.
Mr. Margot, were you done? I'm sorry, I'm sorry. But Howard's next, and then you. All right, thank you.
My, thank you. Well, in honor of Teacher Appreciation Week, I've been very fortunate to have some great teachers, and I just want to take this opportunity to thank Ms. Stahl, Ms. Perkins, Ms. Jester, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Ross, Ms. Maggison, Ms. Stern, Mr. Hillman, Ms. Harper, Ms. Montserrat, Mr. Leroux, and Ms. Wilson, and of course, my favorite teacher of all, Ms. Juliette Goldstein.
Oh. That's sweet.
Little extra pot roast when I get on my oak. Okay.
Now, your son probably ate it all. And also, I guess, in honor of Teacher Appreciation, I had the privilege of sitting on the Middle School Social Science Textbook Adoption Meeting today with Mr. Seaman and a panel of terrific teachers, and I was really amazed at how astute our faculty was during these presentations from the publishers, and what questions they knew to ask, and how they related it to their own classrooms, to the curriculum, to the shift in, in the framework. And it was, it was kind of refreshing to see the professionalism, that level of our, of our teachers in that venue today. So thank you for having me in that meeting. There are a lot of upcoming performances from all the schools. Ms. Hacker mentioned the play at Hawthorne, band concerts at the schools, choir concerts. Check the district calendar, because most of them are put, are printed on there. I know that the, the Magicals is next Wednesday at the All Saints Church over on Santa Monica and Camden. It's a wonderful venue for a choir concert in that church. It's terrific. And then Mother's Day, we, the board has decided not to have a meeting on Mother's Day this year, so that is our gift to the mothers. There you go, thank you.
Mother's Day's Sunday.
But we've been meeting so much.
Oh, you're right. I see. We could break precedent and meet on a Sunday. I wanted to mention that I am a huge Tom Petty fan, so I'd like to speak to Mr. Ethan Smith. When I was president many years ago, that was the song they used to play. I asked for that.